All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Uh, roll call?
McKnight.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Roa.
Here.
Vogel.
Here.
Kinder.
Here.
Uh, pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment on agenda items?
None.
Uh, notice of executive session meetings?
None.
Approval of minutes, April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
Um, communications?
None.
Managers report?
So first we'll start with Peter, uh, he has some updates from the planning commission.
It's just been a while, so I wanted to, uh, address you on what the planning commission has been doing so far and to publicly acknowledge the work that they are up to. Um, back in January, as you know, council unanimously agreed on set of priorities for twenty twenty-four, at least in spirit, to see how far we get along with them. Um, I've shared my attitude with the planning commission that council's priorities have set for us a challenge that we should take seriously and meet, and amongst those is the preparation of a comprehensive plan. I'm happy to report on their behalf that, uh, they're continuing to rise to the challenge as much as they can as a fresh group of citizen advisors. Um, and that I think right now we're hitting our stride in it. So the operating perspective that we're going with, uh, is that a comprehensive plan is an organizing principle. What we have right now, in addition to our eleven-year-old comprehensive plan, are a bunch of other subject plans, uh, on the shelf that have been prepared since then, which may significantly overlap in subjects or topics, but not in the budget that they are prepared under the assumptions, the administration, or any other disparate things that might make them not talk to each other. So the planning commission is right now scouring through them to parse out, again, from their perspective as citizen advisors, what's what in those plans. When the wheat is shifted, uh, sifted from the chaff, uh, we expect to reorganize and collate what all previous councils and everything else has been put on the books, which of that is still relevant, what content has already been present that we can carry forward? And, uh, at that point, we'll have a back and forth with administration and with you and council about what is still relevant that fits our present, uh, attitudes, abilities, budgets, responsibilities, and what's amongst them reasonable to try pursuing over the next several years. So please look forward to that. Um, now would be a good year for council to attend the planning commission's meetings when possible, um, because we know that whatever the planning commissions might say, it's, uh, council's adoption of a comprehensive plan, um, really owns it, and we can't and don't expect to do it without you. And unrelatedly, uh, beautification committee put banners up downtown. So kudos to them for doing that.
Are all the banners up? Do you know?
Yes.
Okay. I do look awesome.
Yeah, as the planning commission liaison, um, I've been attending some meetings and, you know, we'll just underscore what Peter said. The committee is really, uh, rising to the occasion and kind of putting in a lot of work. They're becoming like a working, uh, commission, right? Which is like a shift, I think, in, in the kind of culture of the planning commission, which is, uh, interesting to see play out. Um, and hopefully that'll mean that we can do some of this citizen-led planning in, in-house, it would be cool. Uh, and, and, um, in addition to kind of ha- ensuring that the kind of historic plans that we've done are parsed through, you know, I kind of considered and are talking to each other, um, there, they had, uh, county planning, so Zach Norwood presented at the last meeting, uh, cause the county is, uh, releasing their straight, uh, their comprehensive plan now, right? So there's also kind of this like, uh, you know, uh, desire to kind of tie our plan to right what's happening in the county and let them inform each other. Um, which, um, is great, I appreciate it, I think.
Can I just tell you, like, are you guys just, are you or take it, are you presenting sections of old plans? Like, what's that process? Or have you started that process? You know, like, looking at all the older old plans and crossing stuff out or going, this is?
Yeah, pretty much. I think right now, instead of rewriting anything from scratch, our task is to act as like those editors and proofreaders of what is no longer necessary, go through what is, what statistics or numbers have changed, and what perspectives that we have now that we have didn't have in twenty thirteen, um, for the old plan. So it is a lot, I hope, I won't speak for all the planning commission members, a lot of highlighters, pens and pencils on paper going through, um, as if they were, um, uh, content editors.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Uh, this is not a question, but I don't know where else to, uh, raise it, uh, so I will do it here while I'm tracking my planning commission, but it came up in the planning commission meeting this month, um, and with Shade Tree Commission as well. Um, uh, the concern around contractor and specifically like subcontractors' work, uh, and kind of having some teeth in those things. What I'm talking about is, uh, Heidi Cooper, we're doing great stuff, we got so much money, it's so awesome that we're redoing that park. Uh, Alice Olander, our Shade Tree liaison, I think, or something with Public Works, uh, spent a lot of time with, with Nathan and the, uh, I think the general contractor maybe, um, making a tree preservation plan. Um, according to Alice, Nathan, Public Works, were super receptive and really great about it, but then once it got to the subcontractor level, it stopped being kind of adhered to, and there's like no teeth. So we're gonna lose a lot more trees than like we had anticipated. And so, um, that came up at the planning commission meeting, just to think about like what teeth are there when we do contract work like that to ensure that like, once there's like a plan in place to preserve trees or water or whatever it is, um, that that can be followed through. Um, Zach, having me in the room, said when the county is administering a project on our behalf that they can, said that they can, uh, make folks stick to it if they're made aware of the plans ahead of time. But I don't, they're not always contract, you know, they're not always administering our work. So raising that, not sure where that goes or like how we can kind of, um, yeah, what staff can do to like ensure that that can be followed through.
So for the trees at Heidi Cooper, Alice was brought back in once the issues with the trees were noted, um, after the plan was created. Um, it was a issue of safety, um, so the trees didn't fall onto the shelter once they got in there and the work that they were doing. It was determined that the trees would become so unstable that they couldn't be saved, um, and it was best to cut them down now rather than either wait until the park was done and there's an issue, um, or it falls, one of the trees falls onto the shelter.
Yeah, and so I don't know if that was like, yeah, if that was like a new condition of the tree, you know what I mean? Like, they had assessed and said like, these are the ones we'll keep and these are the ones we won't, so we're just gonna stage equipment here, right? And so I don't know if it was, yeah, right, um, yeah, if those conditions were like created by the work in the park, I don't know. But just, yeah, however we can like, you know, mainly it was just like, it's, it's a shame to lose those trees and also like Alice and Nathan like spent a lot of time, you know, kind of putting that thing together and doing that training, and so good to see that like go to.
I'm not sure if it was a staging issue, um, that prompted what happened, or if that as they got in there, they realized that maybe it was in more of a deteriorated state than they had initially evaluated them at. Um, I know that Nathan had discussions with Alice after this had all transpired. Um, so I, I'm not sure what though prompted the, the tree issue. Was it the staging or just was it something else? I can find out on that.
Yeah, I just, I think if there's anything we can do like on our end as we're creating contracts or like thinking about what the subcontracting of work will collect to make sure all parts are then like sticking to this and stuff, um, uh, that's what I was hearing from Shade Tree and then.
I'm, I'm actually glad to hear that it was, you know, there were steps that were adhered to and that's why, and it wasn't like a communication issue? Cause that's kind of what it sounded like at first when you were, you know, bringing it down that, that, uh, that we're not, um, you know, having a communication issue is as those, you know what I mean, things go down to subcontractors and, and, uh, things from that nature, but, uh, yeah, I agree. I just was hoping that wasn't the case.
Sorry. Uh, so write to know request updates, we're at twenty-four, uh, write to know request around twenty-three hundred dollars in legal fees. I just have a few generosity updates. Uh, so Evan Kardashian was awarded a scholarship to the Eastern Division IAFC, which stands for International Association of Fire Chiefs, uh, for their twenty twenty-four annual conference in New Jersey. It's actually this weekend. He was awarded due to his significant contributions to emergency services. The new website is up and running, thanks to Renna for really focusing on that and getting that started. Uh, it's the same website address as the city had been using previously. You'll just notice an updated version. Uh, cleanup day, the city's cleanup day itself is this Saturday, um, at Public Works from eight to noon, that's ten dollars per carload, uh, sit for city residents, but this is also cleanup week. Uh, so the schedule for cleanup week, thanks to the beautification committee, is posted onto the city's website. Um, so there are different collections. Going to turn over to Tim Walker to talk about six ninety-nine Pine Street.
So the city manager and I have been in discussion about six ninety-nine Pine Street and I've reviewed, I've reviewed pictures, I'm reciting those over, which largely confirmed the description of the property I was provided. Um, it's my understanding that Mary Anna has directed the zoning administrator to ensure that the building is properly boarded up. Um, the city participates in a, in a process known as the fire escrow tax, um, process, where when you have a fire that destroys a property beyond a certain level, the insurance company is obligated to send the tax money, or excuse me, the insurance money to the city, or a certain portion thereof, actually, um, which the city can then use to ensure code compliance. So any of those costs associated with boarding that property up and making it safe, um, should come out of that, uh, fire escrow fund. With respect to the long-term status of the property itself, it's really unfortunate in Pennsylvania, well, I won't say it's unfortunate. It's unfortunate in this case in Pennsylvania that there's such a strong indication for property rights, um, and people have the ability, whoever owns properties have the ability, if they want to, to put, you know, a million dollars into a property worth a thousand. And so the, the laws are written such that we have very limited ability to take or demolish people's property, um, unless there's a situation where it is unsafe. So the way that the law works is we're obligated, if the property owner does not act to board the property up, we can take those steps. We charge it to the fees that we have. If we don't have those fees in place, then we can lean the property for the cost to abate the nuisance, to, to board it up and make it safe. If there was structural issues with the property itself, and there was a concern for the general public because of an imminent collapse or otherwise, then we'd be able to have more tools. However, we don't have those before us right now. The property maintenance code does say that you have six months in which to, um, uh, as a property owner, in which to remediate, put the windows back in, do some level of fixing before the city is able to, um, engage in, in more active intervention at the particular property. Uh, unfortunately, notices, I don't believe, were sent, uh, which started that clock until very recently, um, but those notices have gone out. A bank now owns it, um, and we're hoping that they're going to comply without much hassle, um, with bringing that property back up to speed. Wish I had better news. I know it's nice on the community, you know, it's nice on the neighborhood, and it's definitely a frustrating aspect for the neighbors. But we'll get it boarded up, we'll make it safe from that regard, and then we'll use the tools that are available to us to address the matter.
That's fair.
So six months from notice, not six months from the time, is that right?
I believe so, yes.
And when did they receive notice?
March.
So they, the final boarding notice was of March twenty eighth.
Okay.
So they have a hundred and eighty days from March twenty eighth.
And after that point, then we start pursuing other ways to, is that what you're, is that what you were saying?
I haven't gone much deeper than that, Mayor. Um, got four months, twenty-two days, you know, whatever it may be in order to figure that part out. But at this point, that's where we are, and then, you know, we'll reassess the situation and ascertain what options are available to the city.
And hopefully in that time, the bank or whoa, whoever owns it will come in and do something.
The bank has, um, hired a asset prevention company, uh, which is why the initial boardings by the city were halted. We received an email from that asset prevention company saying that they were in the process of doing this, um, that clearly has not taken place. So we're going to move forward with continuing the boarding, um, and charging it to that fire escrow account. But the bank does have a, a company trying to help them with this property.
Anybody have any other questions?
Would this property be one subject to review by the bided property review committee for possible action?
Peter, do you have thoughts on that? At this point, it's vacant.
Right. Our property code inspectors have brought it up as one of the properties of most concern because of its invisible state. Uh, we tried to, when, when I'm preparing things for the agenda, I try to take all the knowledge that I gather, such as from the, the sale or transfer of property like this one, when it was the heirs then to the bank, and then give them the notice that are, give them the time that our property code inspectors have given them to comply, and they fail to comply in the time that the code inspectors have told me they've given, then yes, I would put it on the agenda. Right now, this is one of those that I believe would clearly be put on the agenda if action isn't taken in the time given.
The agenda for the bided property review committee?
Yes.
Okay.
So if we incur funds to abate beyond what we have escrow, we could file a lien against the property? And at what point could we execute upon that lien?
Uh, at any point, um, executing on the lien would require the filing of a writ of certiorari facis. It's a filing that you make in the Court of Common Pleas identifying that you're, you know, calling the loan, so to speak, we're no longer going to wait on the lien. The property owner then has, uh, thirty days, I believe it is, in which to file what's known as an affidavit of just defense, in which they would express why it is that they do not own the money. Um, it's not appropriate in that case to say, I don't have the money, I don't like the fact that I owe the money, it's, it wasn't me, I don't own the property. I mean, it's like that level of defense that you would have to put together. And then following that, the city could, uh, would, would receive a judgment, likely, I can't give you absolutes, the city would likely receive a judgment. Once you have that judgment, you transfer it to the judgment index. Once it's in the judgment index, then you can go to the sheriffs and start working on execution against that judgment.
So if we pursue the original round, it takes us six months, if we pursue that round only, it takes us a hundred and eighty days?
Half dozen, six and, what is it, six and half dozen? Correct, sir, yes, thank you. Be there for a second.
Uh, and so is it, it, it's in the hands of code enforcement now that they'll see the process through?
Correct.
By the way, counsel, if you happen to have your cell phones with you, I just texted you five photos of the property.
All right, uh, old business?
No.
Okay, new business, discussion motion, um, acceptance of selective insurance as city insurer and carrier.
So this is the annual renewal for the city's non-medical-related insurances. These include items such as property, crime, liability, auto insurance. Um, there's a full breakdown of this in your packet. USI is the city's insurance broker for this type of coverage. You'll note the cost did go up eight, around almost nine percent. Um, this is due to the three new police cruisers, um, incurred as part of the Vernon contract and the liabilities that are associated with working on, on the new officers. Um, for council's reminder, we did include some of the insurance offsets in the Vernon contract, uh, so Vernon is actually paying a, a portion of those incre- uh, increases. This is also, uh, the last year for these rates, um, the selection of rates. We shop out every three years. Next year is that third year that we'll shop out. April is here, if you have any questions?
I have a question for April. We spoke earlier, but the computer fraud and fund transfer insurance has been reduced to zero. Are we picking that up in another policy?
Yes, in the cyber insurance that comes at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to accept?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Discussion motion, approve changes to civil service rule, fire and paramedic provisions.
Included in your packet, well, not in your packet, uh, you had received previously, the changes, red line changes to the civil service rules, uh, that the civil service board approved at their April twenty-fourth meeting. These changes include the removal of basic vehicle rescue, um, at the time, for at the time of hire. That is a certification that the chief felt comfortable allowing them to obtain within the two years of, uh, hire. There's the addition of paramedics into the civil service roles where they didn't exist in previous civil service iterations. Now we've included them. This is primarily due to call-ins and seniority trying to establish those items. Uh, they have the same testing procedures as entry-level firemen, um, so they have an agility test, a written test that they have to pass in order to be brought on board. Uh, there's also, the biggest change is going to be the promotions for lieutenants and captains within the fire department. Initially, this was just three sections that the promotions were graded on, a written and oral, and then a officer, uh, review. We've added a scenario, situational type testing, um, to give the folks a real-life scenario of how they would handle a fire call, a vehicle rescue call, something to that nature. Um, the idea of this is to have a better, well-rounded, some captain, lieutenant, someone in charge of the scene at the time. Um, we've also added bonus points for certain certifications, um, that can be used as part of the promotional process.
Does anybody have any questions?
All of these changes conform to state statutes?
Correct, all changes have been reviewed by labor council as well.
Thank you.
Is it possible to add in a bonus points either for promotion or hire, like, living within the city?
Sure.
Can we do that?
Mm-hmm, yeah, we can do that. As long as it doesn't, uh, supersede the veterans preference points, you can add those preference points.
I don't know if, I mean, I, you know, we'd be open for discussion around that, but right, without the, that requirement, um.
Sure, I didn't think that'd be a good idea.
Incentivizing it, but.
So we can take that back to the civil service board to, for their ripple?
So are you, are you seeking a, a motion then to table that until such a point that it comes back from the civil service board?
Is that what we'd like to do?
Is it a substantial amount of change? Uh, and this is a, like, sorry, I'm just thinking, like, does it make sense to stall it, or do we, you know what I mean, do we pass it? And then also look at an update from the next time, right? It's not an ordinance that needs to be, um, publicized, advertised and passed a few times, right? So I'm thinking, I'm okay with it as is, and could we look at that other thing in the near future so that we don't?
We can take a look at it as, um, if we're making any additional changes to police promotional testing or something like that, we can do all of it at once. But I, you could pass it today. Um, we do have promotional testing coming up that we're, the fire department was hoping to get on.
Yeah, right, I think that that makes sense. And yeah, I don't think we need to stop, especially if we find that there's an issue with maybe introducing that, you know, you don't need to get tricked up. So I'm good, yeah, to move forward with the vote and look at that in the near future, next few months if we can.
If we're going to send it back to the civil service commission, could we ask them to look at sections four twelve and four thirteen? Pass it with mathematical computations?
Well, I think we're saying we're sending it back to them a- after a vote tonight?
Right.
You're saying, okay.
That's fine.
But also if we're sending it back, you would like them to add that, okay, got it, yeah. Does anybody have any other questions? All right, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
Uh, resolution, authorized signatures, uh, CoStar's salt participation agreement. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
I will read that. A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville authorizing Public Works Director Nathan Zizula to enter into the attached salt contract participation agreement via the Pennsylvania Department of General Services CoStars program.
Um, this is the same program that we do each year or is this something?
Yep, same program. Uh, this is the contract for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five season. Um, just as a reminder that we don't have a pricing associated with this, how CoStar's purchasing works for salt is the state aggregates kind of all of the people who want to participate, they go out to bid, because you get a lower bidder, um, bidding price when you have a larger group of people involved. That's the price per ton that we pay, um, at the end of the year. So last year, for example, uh, we paid about sixty-two dollars and forty cents per ton, spent about ninety thousand dollars, uh, on salt for this past season.
Do we have, are we required to purchase a minimum amount of salt under this agreement?
Uh, it's two hu- two thousand tons of salt.
And based on last winter, do we have quite a bit left over?
I do not know the answer to that.
The resolutions is minimum purchase of fifteen hundred tons?
I don't know.
It's two thousand. Lot of salt.
Does anybody have any other questions? Roll call?
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Resolution, authorized signatures, district magistrate lease, city of Meadville and Crawford County.
A resolution of the, the council of the city of Meadville authorizing signatures on a lease agreement for the magistrate show district judge office at eight ninety-four Diamond Park between the city of Meadville and Crawford County.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Now discussion?
Let's pause. Uh, the district magistrate's lease expired at the end of twenty twenty-three. The reason for the delay is there's been a little bit of back and forth on where, um, the district magistrate will ultimately end up, whether stay in the city building or be moved over to the courthouse. Um, this lease in front of you is for two years, substantially similar to the last lease that was signed in twenty twenty. Two percent increase in rent each year. There is, I will note, a removal of the provision that the county pays for a portion of the entire city building's utilities. But the overwhelming thought was that giving up that provision was well worth keeping the district magistrate here for at least another two years.
Yeah, you mentioned the officer pay, that's city officer, right? It's not county share.
Correct.
You're just, you're talking about the idea that our officers would have to transport folks across the diamond and there would have to be two, you said there had to be two.
For safety reasons, when we transport, it's usually two officers doing that. And they, contractually, officers are paid an additional cost when they go to the courthouse. So keeping the magistrate here is ideal for the city and cost savings especially.
And that's transporting people from our jail cells to the, for ramen and things like that? How long has the magistrate been since the city moved to this building? Has it been? It's before.
He was over at the.
They were still at the city building.
Yeah. Oh, I didn't know that.
The last lease we signed was three years. Has it, have they been historically three-year leases?
Yes.
Does anybody have any other questions?
We have a sec, like, we're hoping, so we got them to stay for two years, hoping they'll kind of continue after that to remain here.
That, that is the hope.
I guess.
Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Public comment on non-agenda items?
I guess we do have two signatures. We have Carol Jewell. Would you like to speak?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear all of what you had to say, but I'm one of the unfortunate neighbors of 699 Pine Street. A, the house is not boarded. They say it is, but there are about this much of a sun porch in the front is not, none of the back is boarded. It constantly smells, it's been 13 months. And we just need to know that something's being done in our neighborhood. It's a hazard, there are a lot of little kids that live on Burns Avenue. I don't know how many are going to go in and out, there have been in and out of there. There are no floors in half of the house. So who would be responsible if a kid gets hurt in there? Do you have an answer? I mean, I don't know. Is the bank responsible? Is the city responsible?
Yeah, what I had said, the property owner would be responsible, but.
Which is the bank?
Which is the bank. What I had said is that the city has directed their folks to go and ensure that the boarding up is done correctly. We'll charge it against the funds that the city has in place for that and that code enforcement is actively pursuing. We have to wait for some timelines to expire pursuant to the laws that have been adopted, but code enforcement is actively pursuing compliance.
So they have six months to finish boarding it up? Is that?
No, they have six months before we can do anything after it's been boarded up, before we can take affirmative action against them. We have to give them a period of time after the property's been boarded up to fix it themselves. So we're allowing them to have that opportunity. Certain notices weren't previously sent, and I believe they were not previously sent because there was no active, live owners of the property because of someone who had deceased in the fire, and there might have been some confusion with that. Now we have, we have an owner, notices have been sent, the times are ticking off, and it's actively being worked on.
So that would be by September, we have to have an answer. I believe the papers went out in March that are posted on the house.
It did go end of March, so that'd be end of September, right? But the boarding will happen sooner.
Well, the boarding, they're going to have problems with because every time we have a hard win, more of the house is falling down. So it's not a safety problem. Yes, it is a safety problem. And I don't know how they're going to board this up unless they take something and just put sheets all across, build a new house in the back. But as long as the city doesn't have to pay for it, I don't care who pays for it. Let the bank do it if they will, or if they even, do they even know it burned?
The, the city is going to actively have the property boarded up. The bank is aware of it. The city manager reported that there is an asset protection company which has been hired by the bank to start handling this particular property. They haven't worked as quickly as the city would like them to work, which is why the city is going to go out and handle the boarding up of the property itself. They're tired of waiting for the bank to make that happen. Once that's made safe, then we can start working on the other processes that are available to the city.
The people that were there boarding it up, I share the driveway. They left there with supplies, so I think they're under the impression the place is boarded up. Because they left there with wood still on the trailer, front door is not boarded up. I mean, they left and they were basically like, we're done.
I think that's why the city's going to go make it happen.
Okay. But yeah, like you said, there's stuff falling off the house into the driveway.
And the backyard, I mean, the back of the house does, really, basically doesn't exist.
Yeah, I, I went to the sheriff's sale to try to purchase it. The bank was willing to bid up to $68,000 to get it back. I was willing to go five grand to get it. I, I mean, if I can get it at a reasonable price, I have someone lined up to demolish it within two weeks of getting the title. I just need to be able to acquire it.
Could you introduce yourself?
Jason Lidle.
Jason Lidle? Yes, sorry, sorry. You, you started talking before she introduced you, so. Okay, so you're a neighbor, and so you were both here for, for this property in particular?
I share the driveway of this place.
Okay, and, and you tried to buy it, it didn't happen that way, the bank has it?
I've tried contacting the bank.
We don't think the bank was aware that it burned when they bought it.
No, they were, they had it appraised. The bank had it appraised, the appraiser told the bank it was worth absolutely nothing. And not even, was it worth nothing, it would cost them more to acquire it because they'd have to tear it down. And they still went after it and said that they would go up to 68,000 to get it back.
Do we know the name of the bank?
Carrington?
New Wilmington.
Oh, yeah, there's.
New Wilmington, I think, New Wilmington, but some.
Yeah. And I've tried to contact them. I've tried just about everybody. They tell me that once it goes up for sale, it'll be on this website, equator.com, and then I can bid on it then. You can't talk to anybody about anything.
Right. So, so that is the, that, that's what's happening. It's, it's sold, we're going to get it boarded up, correct? And then you're going to know when we get it boarded up, and then you're going to keep an eye on it to see if it goes up on that website to be able to buy it?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we'll do all we can.
Go ahead. Why do you have a question? If it is like obviously like dangerous, like the floors aren't there and it's parts, parts are falling off, does that, how you mentioned that, that, you know, if it's a safety thing, does that give us any, the structural issues? Yeah, does that give us any?
I am not the structural guy, Gretchen, but what I would suggest is that when the property is boarded up and nobody can get into it, the condition of the interior is not a concern.
Yeah.
It is the condition of the exterior and whether the exterior is in a position such that it is causing a harm or a risk of harm to the general public or those around it.
Yeah.
And if.
Sounds like it's blowing away some wind.
If, if that is going, our property code inspectors need to go take a look.
Right, and, and when they board it up, hopefully that'll be at least until we can do something.
Well, I am certain we will learn more at the time that we've got boots on the ground and people crawling around whatever's left.
Another question. A number of the first floor windows have been boarded, or at least partially boarded, but as Carol said, the back of the, the house has not been. And neither have the second floor windows. Is it required to board them up? Because again, if somebody wants to get in, they can get a ladder and climb onto the roof and, and get in.
Yeah, I don't think they're going to do the second floor. I don't think it's a requirement to the second floor.
Well, we'll have our folks look at it too.
Right.
I don't have a good answer for you with the particulars of the property. All I've seen are the pictures you sent me.
And, and to be fair, if somebody wants to get into a building, even if it is boarded up, they're going to get into a building. Right, like, I mean, we, we understand that, and, do you know what I mean, like, so.
The city's obligation.
So we're going to do our best to keep it safe and get it boarded up and, and do what we can per whatever we have on the books, right? If we do second story, then we do second story, right?
What, what we're trying to avoid is that situation where the property is an attractive nuisance, where there are kids and other people who are like, ooh, let's go see what's going on in that particular property.
Yeah.
I, somebody, go down the chimney, I don't know. There's a level of, there's a level of, we've done our role, but it's, it's going to be dependent upon the condition at the property itself. If the back is a huge big gaping hole, that's an intervening factor that needs to be considered. Right.
Right on. All right.
Good questions.
Council member statements? Do you have something?
Thank you for coming out, Carol, I believe, Frank? Sorry, I forgot your last name. But yeah, thank you for addressing council, if you're concerned about the 966, 996 property on Main Street. And yeah, thank you.
Do you understand that?
I believe the entire bank's motive is that of possessing property. I'm sure they're going to try and charge it for a higher bid price than it's even worth. But hopefully the city and people will be able to do something about that property and get it safe and help the community out.
Jim?
Thanks, I have a number of comments tonight, but Carol, thank you for coming, Mr. Lidle, appreciate you coming tonight. We talked earlier this afternoon, and you can even smell the house in the neighborhood, the charred wood. So it is definitely a nuisance. So I hope we can work expeditiously, yet still comply with the laws that we're bound to comply with to get the situation resolved. Meanwhile, the last couple of weeks have been really busy for our public safety people. And I think we should thank the Meadville Police Department and other law enforcement agencies for their work in apprehending the person accused of making a bomb threat at the judicial center. Additional thanks to the police for arresting and charging the threat actor who fibers bullet into someone else's car down at South Main and Willow Street. Thanks to Meadville Fire Department for extinguishing a basement fire on Randolph Street. That prevented a lot of damage and residents were quickly, I guess, able to return to their home. Recently, I think you were aware, I had the opportunity to ride along with the paramedics and the EMTs, and I witnessed firsthand their professionalism and diplomacy and tactic dealing with members of the public, particularly those who are, shall we say, strong-willed. And thanks to the fire department lieutenant, Jim Aldrich, and congratulations to him on his retirement from full-time duty. I think he's going to come back occasionally and fill in for us. I told him he should work one day and take two off. But he's a credit to the community and the department, and he's loved and respected by all those who know him. So I wish him and his wife Linda many years of health and happiness, and may his new fishing boat be filled to the bow with trophy bass and lola. Finally, thanks or congratulations to Evan Kardasch on his obtaining a scholarship. I'm sure it is very well deserved and he'll make great use of it. I have nothing further.
Thanks, Jim. Gretchen?
Thanks, Jim, that was great. Thank you so much for coming. It does make me wonder if there's a way we can make sure that, like, that doesn't happen again, like somehow there's stuff in there, I don't know, if there's something we can do to just make sure there isn't that lag time. There's got to be something. I just want to give a shout out to the beautification committee for the flags because they're really beautiful and they, they look great around town, and also for the cleanup week and the first Friday event, the celebrating Meadville was really wonderful. It was great, they had all the nice historical pictures, what do you call it, just framed artwork about architecture and the fall, and it was just, it was a great event.
Thanks, Gretchen. Mary?
I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, I echo the thanks, Miss Jewel and Mr. Lidle, thanks for coming. You know, I, I've seen that house a lot, but it, obviously there was a lot going on in the background that we didn't know about, so it's appreciated that you kind of raised, you know, elevated the situation, hopefully making it a public thing will expedite some things, that would be great. But appreciate you kind of keeping an eye on your neighborhood and kind of wanting what's best for you and your neighbors. That's, you know, just how we should live. So thanks for bringing it to our attention. I think, I saw Eerie News Now here today, they were doing a kind of one-year story on kind of year in review of the, of the fire department and our ambulance service, so we'll watch for, for that, but that was, that was neat to see, I was like, what happened? And then I learned it was a good thing, so that's great. And thanks to our fire department for giving the news, something good to come and cover. Thanks to, I go to beautification committee, the banners look great, cleanup day, I've already used this cleanup week and have stuff to take every day, so thanks for making that possible. Yeah, I also express gratitude and congratulations to Jim Aldrich. I miss the retirement party, I was out of town, but yeah, Jim is a joy, and I wish him the best in his retirement. There's lots going on this weekend, Dally Gini College graduation, so congratulations to everybody who is graduating this weekend. It's also Second Saturday, the first Second Saturday market of the season, so folks should check that out this coming Saturday. Spots are open at the Mark Community Garden, so get your garden plot and join the community garden. You can find the signup info on the markforfun.com, the Mark's website. And the Saturday farmers markets has started up again at, at the Meadville Market House, so it is like the best time of year to be in Meadville. We all get our vitamin D again and see each other, and we feel better. So yeah, just, yeah, gratitude for all the folks that put that, put work in to put those things on and together and make our community great and.
Thanks, Autumn. Yeah, I, I want to echo the sentiments about our emergency services personnel, I think they are second to none. We, we have great services and these are people that care about the citizens who live here, so, and that's from the police to the EMS and the fire department. I think it's evident that, you know, Meadville's focus is on, on safety and how we care about each other. I think that was very clear here with, we have citizens that live in the neighborhood that are concerned about safety and, and I think possibly that could, you know, steer maybe Meadville to look at blighted properties and find a way to, to handle those things and maybe empty properties too. So that would, I, I want to thank you guys, the citizens, to get us looking in that direction, right? For safety, empties and, and blighted properties, so I appreciate that. We do have a lot going on. It is getting beautiful out, not that it wasn't for a while. I can't wait to plant some plants, right? Like, and, and I'm with a group that has five raised beds at the Mark Garden, so that, that is awesome, and I'm anxious to see all of the music in the park, right? We always have so many events that have music in the park that we can go and sit and, and fellowship and be together. And I think that is part of the beauty of this town, not just being able to walk and talk to people, but again, caring about each other as citizens and, and being a part of, you know, the legacy of community here. And I think that is what Meadville stands for. So I just appreciate everybody that comes to these meetings and voices their opinions and, and lets us know what's wrong and helps us figure out the solutions. I also want to thank all of the volunteers that we talked about from the beautification committee that did beautiful signs and the working board we have now, working on a comprehensive plan. We need to remember that this is just citizens that are giving their time to the city to make it better, and I just want to applaud them for giving us their time and making a difference here, making it better for the people who live here. So that, I think I will. So with that, I think I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Ooh, second.
Discussion?
Aye.
Yeah, roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.